Hi, my name is Jonathan Narciss. I'm editor and publisher of the Communicator Newspaper. And also several other community publications, The Bystander, El Camino Cauter, Iowa Front Terrace, just a family of community newspapers. And today we are here with Ebsure Omar, who is running for the 3rd ward for the Des Moines City Council. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
So, first of all, tell us a little about yourself. I always like to start off on a more friendly note. So, tell us about yourself and your background and who you are.
Alright, well, it's good to be here. First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity. There's a lot to tell about me. I have a very, very long story, not common with American experience. I was born in Amadou Dushu Somalia during the civil war where my father had died two months prior to my birth. And the country was in ruins and my widowed mother had to leave the country with me and my brothers and sisters. And we fled to a refugee camp in the northern Kenyan desert run by the United Nations. And I spent the first four years of my life in that refugee camp without access to adequate education, without access to adequate healthcare, water, and shelter. It was a dire situation for millions of families who were in the same boat, who left the country due to the civil war. And my family was very lucky. We had applied for asylum as refugees to several countries. And we were accepted by the United States to come as refugees. And that was during a time where refugees were welcomed and accepted into this nation. We were able to come to the United States and we settled in Seattle where I spent majority of my childhood. And that's where I graduated high school, attended my first year of college, and then I moved to Iowa to attend Iowa State University where I was studying history, education, and political science. And I decided to stay in Des Moines. You know, I never thought I would live in Iowa, being born in Somalia, growing up in the west coast, you know, but Iowa struck me as a very unique place. It was a place that was very welcoming. You know, the saying Iowa nice is true. People in Iowa are very considerate. They are good, decent human beings. And I decided to stay in Iowa and started business. You know, I was flipping homes for several years. And I also started several other businesses here in Des Moines and Minneapolis. And that's just a little bit about me. There's a lot more to say, but I don't want to take up too much time.
No, there's, I mean, family, do you have family here?
Yep, my mother lives here. She just retired this year. It's an interesting experience.
So, you brought her here?
I did. And I'm a very big family person. You know, I want to take care of my mother because she did so much for me as a child leaving a war-torn country. And, you know, it's incumbent upon me to take care of her in her old age. So, I brought her here to Des Moines and she lives in the downtown corridor and she has great access to all the amenities here, the Farmer's America during the summertime. And, you know, it's a wonderful place. And one of my siblings does live in the city still. And the rest of my family is spread all across the world.
So, you brought your sibling here too?
Oh, yeah. He moved here by himself.
Okay. So, what brought him here there?
I think it was opportunities. You know, when you look at Iowa's economic realities, we have some of the lowest unemployment in the country. You know, Des Moines gets so many accolades, year after year for best place for young professionals to live, you know, one of the richest cities in the country. We have plenty of job opportunities for people in the city and in the entire state. So, you know, I think that's what draws in here and it's what draws thousands of other young professionals that live in the downtown corridor every single year from small towns in Iowa or whether they live on the east or west coast. Des Moines and Iowa is a happening place right now. So, the draw is very strong.
Now, you mentioned business. You mentioned you've been in several businesses. What's your current business?
Right now, so I am a property developer. I flip homes in the city. And my goal with that is, you know, alleviating some of the problems with affordable housing. We work with distressed properties. You know, some of these properties are almost on the line of being condemned. And we come in and we completely refurbish these homes in these neighborhoods. We're doing infilling basically. And we try to sell our homes at lower than the median household price in Des Moines because now it's creeping up to $250,000, $300,000, sometimes $100,000. And for young families just starting out, that's just not feasible. So, my line of business is, you know, doing that type of construction and property sales. And also, we run a large daycare center out of Minneapolis near the University of Minnesota. And we're in the midst of starting a halal meat company here in Des Moines. And for those who don't know what halal is, it's the Muslim version of kosher.
Now, you've decided to run for the Des Moines City Council.
Yes.
What made you decide to get into politics?
Politics is not amusing thing, first of all. It's, you know, throwing yourself out there into the public sphere, you know, opening yourself up for public, you know, review, discussion. Nothing is private anymore. When you want to become a public figure, you're opening up your life. So, it's not a small decision to take. I remember earlier this year, after Donald Trump was sworn in as president, one of the first actions he took was to issue a Muslim ban, blocking people from several Muslim-majority nations from entering the United States. And one of those nations was my home country of Somalia. So, that struck me personally that the Donald Trump of the campaign was really the Donald Trump presidency, that he was fulfilling those promises he made to his constituents. And I remember when that decree came down, I was heartstruck. It was the first time that the federal government actually took steps to disenfranchise me as a person. And a couple of my friends, we got together and we put together a rally on the state Capitol in response to the Muslim ban stating that Iowa does not support that. And we created a Facebook page and we put the event out there with less than 48 hours' notice. And it was, it was a cold winter morning. It was about 15 to 20 degrees outside. It was pretty chilly. And 1,500 people showed up to that event. We were surprised, we only had less than 200 people state that they were coming, but we just saw people keep coming, keep coming in support, some of them wearing their Women's Marches hats because they knew what was going on in this country was absolutely unacceptable. And we stood out there in solidarity in the cold air to say that all human beings are welcome, no matter your religion, no matter your race, no matter your nation of origin, if you want to come to this country and seek a better life, we're not going to discriminate against you. And, you know, at that night, I took a stand that, you know, I would be a vocal voice, an ever-present reminder to neo-Nazis, white supremacists, and the KKK that immigrants live in this community, that Muslims are a part of our city, and that we are contributing to the cultural and economic life of our nation and the city. And that, you know, the narrative that we're terrorists, that we're uneducated, that we are out there is not going to hold any longer. And that I would stand for office and represent everyone in our community and make sure that those who describe themselves as immigrants or Muslims are people of other religions or backgrounds will feel welcome in the city. And to change that paradigm in our local discourse in the city to make sure everyone feels enfranchised and that we as a city do not take steps to disenfranchise anyone in any way. And that's what projected me to this race. You know, it's not, I'm not seeking a higher office.
But if that's the issue that got you involved in politics, why not run for the 3rd congressional district where you have the ability to influence national or international issues as opposed to a city council?
I know, that's a very good question. You know, I think everyone has their responsibilities, everyone has their duties. And there are a great host of people running right now for the 3rd congressional district as a Democrat, some of them my friends. And we have some very good representatives. But we also have to remember, majority of interactions people have in their day-to-day life is not with the federal government or any of its agencies. It's local. It's your interactions with your police department, your fire and medical services. It's your interactions with, you know, city employees. You know, it's the quality of life you have. Does your neighborhood have resources? Do you have quality parks where you kids can go to? Do you feel safe when you call the police department? That you're going to receive the same type of representation and service that a traditional blond-eyed, blue-haired, uh, blue-haired, blond-haired, blue-eyed person in this country would? And, you know, there are so many levels of assets to government that we have to stand up and work for people. And for me, the most direct impact that I could have at this time is on city council. There's issues surrounding affordable housing, police discrimination in our city, the misallocation of our public resources to those at the top while those at the bottom struggle economically and are not finding...
Let me ask you this. And, you know, I've always kind of conducted my interviews by kind of loosely interpreted progress rules of order. So, there are times when you get to interrupt for points of clarification and those type of things. What funds have been misappropriated?
When we look at the city, there is a tax incentive mechanism called TIP, tax increment financing.
Okay, so, we'll get back to that. So, you're specifically saying that we've seen a misappropriation of funds at the local level?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll get back to that. One of my concerns is, over the years, involved in politics. And I think that one of the, you mentioned you were a Democrat. One of the, to me, great vulnerabilities of the Democratic Party and the progressive community, which is why we've seen that both suffered devastating losses in Iowa and devastating losses on the national level, is our political inconsistencies driven by the cult of personality. So, if person A does something, it's horrific. And if someone else does the exact same thing and they're charismatic, it's okay versus us being focused on the issues. I published two Latino papers. El Camino Cauter is in English and Iowa Front Terrace is in Spanish. During the Obama years, he was known as the deporter-in-chief. His administration deported more brown-skinned folks, because he wasn't really deporting Canadians, than any administration in history, in fact, all other administrations combined. But President Obama was cool. I voted for him twice. And so, no one raised hell about it. The countries that President Trump had on his travel ban were the same countries that President Obama's administration said, "We should watch folks coming from these countries." So, do, is there, and I ask this more to understand your political frame of mind than to get into the issue, but is there a danger that issues are driven by personality than by the actual impact? And I'll throw one last example out. NFL owners freaked out when President Trump said that people ought to boycott NFL games where players taking a knee, yet these same owners wouldn't hire Colin Kaepernick. So, do I really want to see them say, "Trump is horrible," when they're doing the same thing by banning him for doing what the president... And I'm not taking a position on either side, but I'm saying at what point do we get beyond the politics of personality, which then become the politics of hypocrisy, and get to core Is that a fair question?
I think it's a fair and valid question. It's something that I've been talking about myself. You know, I supported President Obama his first term and his second term, but the reality of life for people in this country was that President Obama had deported more people than Donald Trump could imagine.
So, why wasn't there outrage when he was the deporter-in-chief, but there's outrage when President Trump is talking about building the wall that Hillary Clinton voted for?
And that's a very true...
As a senator in New York?
That is very true. You know, hypocrisy, I don't want to even call it, you know, politics of, you know, personalities. It's blatant hypocrisy. If you are a Democrat, growing up, I understood that you stood for people of color, you stood for minorities, you stood for equality, you stood for those core values. So, accepting a system of deportation is not, doesn't sit well with me. And, you know, it's that cult of personality. People don't really look beyond the veneer of what's going on. You know, there's, there's an idea and a shape of what things look like. But when you look at the nitty-gritty, there are some things that are disturbing on the right and the left, you know? And, you know, when Donald Trump said, you know, "We're going to ban these people," he took concrete steps in banning them. You know, and President Obama did say, "We're going to take a look at these people," right? But he did not stop them from coming into this country. And you also have to look at the added veneer of Donald Trump saying, "I'm going to create a Muslim ban." He literally said it dozens and dozens of times on his campaign trail, which is in direct violation of the Constitution. It says you cannot establish religion nor deny one in this country, right? It's the freedom of religion. There's two stanzas in the Constitution. You can't establish a religion, nor can you deprive your religion in this nation. And so, when you look at that, that's fair and game right there, you know? He actually did what he said.
So, what about those who would say that Muslims from countries like Indonesia and other large population Muslim countries were allowed in the country, but then Christians from places in the Middle East weren't because they were from those countries?
And the fact of it is...
Because Muslims from France and England and all these other countries were not banned from being able to come in based upon the travel ban that was proposed. It was individuals from specific countries. And again, those countries were exactly the same countries that the Obama administration had recommended not allowing individuals in from.
And to poke holes at his argument, the thing is that there's a danger from people coming from this country. You know, I came from Somalia, my family came from Somalia, hundreds of my relatives came to this country. Not a single one of us ever committed a crime. Not a single one of us ever put this nation in danger. We are thankful and grateful for the opportunities that we have. And as a person who came as an immigrant, to tell you the process and the rigor you have to go through in the verification to become a refugee in this country, it's extensive. They look at your criminal history, they look at your family ties, they take blood tests, fingerprints. Your entire genetic data is stored in their system. Every single detail of your life is put to scrutiny. It is one of the most dehumanizing experiences you can go through. You're put through an Interpol list, you're checked through the FBI's list and NSA's list. The people who are coming into this country are absolutely squeaky clean. There is no way you can go through the resettlement process and go through the State Department's checks and have anything in your background. If you have a slight demarcation on your record, your application is going to be rejected.
So, the reason I've spent, spent the time I've spent on this, because this is the issue you said got you into politics. Let's come to Des Moines. Arguably, Des Moines consists of two separate and unequal cities. There is the Des Moines of the district you are proposing to represent. The 3rd ward of the city of Des Moines looks considerably different than other parts of the city. So, if you become the 3rd ward city council person, which Des Moines are you going to represent? Or do you even accept that premise? You might not accept that premise. You might say, "Well, just, you know, my characterization isn't accurate."
No, I wouldn't say your characterization is inaccurate, but there are a lot of nuances that people don't realize. The 3rd ward is the richest district and also the poorest. It has one of the most diverse populations. If you look at the 3rd ward, it includes downtown, it includes South Grand, one of the richest neighborhoods in Iowa, right? That's true. But if you also look at it, Oak Ridge Community filled with the poorest residents in our city, immigrants, some of them who don't speak English, some of them who only lived in this country for a year, live in the same district. You know, there is a pale of two cities within the district itself. You know, you have the ultra-rich and the ultra-ford, the ultra-enfranchised and those who don't have access to adequate resources and political structures in our city. So, for me, you know, I am a refugee in this country, but I'm well-to-do right now. You know, I'm living a well-to-do life and I'm thankful for the blessings that I have. For me, when I sit on city council, if elected, I'm going to represent everyone. You know, our interests are more common than their differences. Everyone wants, everyone needs access to police resources. We want to feel safe in our communities, you know? Everyone needs access to quality roads. No one wants to drive through streets filled with potholes. No one wants to deal with crime-infested streets. No one wants to deal with quality of water that's extremely bad due to pollution from Big Ag in Iowa, you know? A lot of the issues that the city council works on cuts across race, it cuts across income lines, it cuts across all those isms that we look at.
Let me ask you a question. When I sit here with Josh Mandelbaum and I sit here with Michael Kirin, and not necessarily literally here, I always let the person I'm interviewing with politics pick the setting because that way they start off more comfortable. I guarantee you that Josh is going to say he wants good water and safe streets and good schools and families to be able to take their kids to parties. Michael's going to say the same thing. So, I'm trying to figure out, why should folks vote for you instead of vote for them? And I picked up on, you mentioned in your opening comments that you said, "Des Moines is one of the richest cities, a great place for young professionals." You mentioned all these accolades. And so, and it also goes to why I was asking about some of the technical issues on the perception of the travel ban, because I think that helps us understand what kind of political person, you know, what a person will bring to politics, whether it's a passion or whatever else. Seventy-five percent of the families with children in Des Moines, who have kids in our district, can't feed them with some type of government assistance. And yet, we hear Des Moines is one of the richest cities. How do we reconcile the overwhelming empirical evidence that shows high levels of poverty with an argument that is also one of the richest cities in the country? And what does that mean in terms of the style of political representation one brings to office, since that's one of the first places you went? Again, is it a fair question?
It's a very fair question, and I'm going to break it into two parts. The first part is what sets me apart from Josh and Michael. And the second part is how can we reconcile that disconnect that we're one of the richest cities in the country, that's the accolade that we have?
On an aggregated basis.
On an aggregated basis, but the reality of fact for thousands of residents is that they can't afford the basic necessities of life. So, on the first part, I'll say...
Thousands or a majority?
Thousands in Des Moines, you know?
When you're looking at, when you're looking at nearly seventy-five percent of folks having to have the government help put food on their kids' table or fill their kids' bellies, that would suggest that it's not just a few thousand, but it's a, you know, a significant consideration.
And that's quite true. So, when we look at, you know, me, Michael, and Josh, you know, we all support clean water, we all support safe streets. But when we look at the issue of policing first and foremost, Josh Mandelbaum accepted an endorsement from the Des Moines Police Union. But when we look at the things that the Des Moines Police Department has done in the last several years, it's absolutely atrocious. For example, there is an officer on the street today.
Can I ask you a question? If the Des Moines Police Union would have endorsed you, would you have accepted?
I would have sent a letter back saying, "Thank you, but no thank you." And when we look at it, there's an officer on the street right now.
And let me, and let me just say this. There are elected officials who I've interviewed, and two or three terms down the road, the things they've said to me, we have another conversation about them two or three terms. So, if you get elected...
I won't accept an endorsement until we change the condition of the police department. And there's specific metrics. So, when we look at the police department, I'll give you, I'm going to give you several examples. When officers commit civil rights violations in the city of Des Moines, there are basically no ramifications. There is an officer in Des Moines right now. His name is Cootie Grimes.
Well, let me ask you this, because I, here, one of the things, this is, this is one of the things I've always tried to do with politicians. I've always tried to steer them away from anecdotal examples of why there are problems and redirect them to what solution they would take. So, let's stipulate that there are issues or problems in terms of police-community relationships. What specific things do you propose to improve them?
Before we get there, we have to accept that there's a problem and just say...
We're stipulating.
Okay, we're stipulating that there's an issue. So, the first thing is we need to ban the acquisition of military equipment from this police department. And we also need to demilitarize. We need to change the way our police function. If you drive around this city, you will see officers sitting in their cars.
What does the demilitarization mean?
You know, changing the police interaction right now, it is top-down enforcement. It means making police departments more community-oriented. You know, when was the last time you saw an officer walk down a street, walk into neighborhoods, you know, play with children, talk to the people in the residence? When I drive around the city constantly...
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth. Just some examples, but on a daily basis, you see officers parked in their cars, you know, two of them just chatting away, not interacting with the community at all, not building those relations. So, we have to, first of all, stop that type of practice, you know, where it's top-down enforcement.
But you said demilitarization. Some might suggest that that's a function of not having adequate resources, that in a city that's spread out as much as Des Moines is... Des Moines geographically is a big city. Some might suggest that it's difficult for police to be on foot when they have so few resources. And I'm not saying that. But I'm saying some might say that it's difficult for them when there's so few resources to be on foot, when they might have to respond to a call. And then somebody says, "Well, why didn't you get to me in three or four or five minutes?" They're not going to accept because I was out chatting with the neighborhood. So, that's what some people might say. Again, I'm not saying that. But you used the term demilitarization. So, I want to understand what you mean by militarization and then what demilitarization looks like.
And it's about banning the acquisition of military-style weapons. There was a ban for years under the Obama administration that police departments could not acquire equipments that was used by military. You know, there is no, like, for example, if we looked at Ferguson, you know, an atrocity happened in that city and the citizens were responding.
But what if it was Vegas?
Las Vegas, right?
Wouldn't it have helped the police that had the ability to respond?
They didn't show up with Humvees to Las Vegas.
I'm just asking a question.
But we're looking at reality.
And I only ask these questions because voters, when they're trying to differentiate, will, will think of some of these kind of questions. So...
And, you know, that topic is going to take a lot of discussion. It's, you can't, it's not something we can contextualize in several minutes.
I mean, David Young, let me give you... David Young, who's our 3rd congressional district representative, sent out a survey saying, "Should we or shouldn't we ban the bump stock?" You're talking about disarming the police from having military-style weapons when David Young, our congressional district representative for Des Moines, is doing a survey on whether he should disarm civilians from having military-style weapons. So, you know, this is something our congressional person spent significant resources reaching out to his constituents to determine. What about those individuals who would say, "How can you first talk about disarming police when we aren't even disarming civilians from having the ability to have things like bump stocks, the term semi-automatic weapons into military-style weapons?"
And I'm not saying we're going to be disarming the police department. I'm saying we should not have military-style equipment on the streets of Des Moines.
Well, then let me ask you one last question.
And then another question. You know, you asked me several things about what I wanted to do about police department. That's a very, very small portion of what I want to do. The second thing is, you know, a zero-tolerance policy for civil rights violations. And that's the biggest thing I'm focusing on. We have officers in Des Moines who have been found guilty in federal court of civil rights violations, and they still continue to have their jobs. They're rehired. That's an issue, you know? We have to look at officers who commit atrocities, who violate the civil rights of residents, are found guilty in a court of law, and continue to have their job. Right now, if you work at a company and you come to work like several times, buddy, you're going to be out the door. Imagine being a police officer violating the civil rights of residents you are sworn to protect. And when you violate those, you know, that oath and you violate the law, there's no repercussions. We have to have a zero-tolerance policy in our city. There are several officers who have been doing this. It's been documented. Right now, if you look at the UCLA, I mean ACLU and the NAACP did a study in Iowa. If you're a black and brown person, you're eight times more likely to be arrested for the same crime as an individual. You know, there is police discretion and discrimination that's occurring for people who are black and brown. And for, and when those interactions go awry and people's civil rights are violated, there's no repercussions for people. We had two officers here in Des Moines last year who were found that they were planting evidence on people, you know? They were, they just quickly resigned on the department. There was no big fuss. And it took several months of community outrage for them to even start investigating this situation really seriously. You know, there are great issues. It's not just about banning the acquisition of military equipment. It's about having a zero-tolerance policy and saying that as a city, as a police department, we value everyone regardless of their background. And that when officers violate the law, we will hold them accountable. You know, that's a big part of it.
You mentioned civil rights. And police-community relations is an important issue. Once upon a time, the city of Des Moines had a viable, vibrant Des Moines Human Rights Today, I think it could be argued that the Des Moines Human Rights Commission has just become a way to keep an individual employed and that there is, has been a massive and significant decline in the quality of advocacy and representation based upon what we used to see from the Des Moines Human Rights, from the days of Lamar Jackson through the days of Rudy Sims. So, it's part of the challenge, not just addressing police-community relations, but also looking at the entire investment into human rights on the part of the city of Des Moines, because when we look at the Human Rights Department, it is a waste of taxpayer dollars as it exists now. I'm not asking you that. I'm saying, as it exists now, it is a waste of tax payer dollars as it exists now. I'm saying, as it exists now, it is a waste of taxpayer funds. As it used to exist, it was a great investment of taxpayer funds. So as a city councilperson, would you address the need to actually reinstitute a real and viable and meaningful Human Rights Department?
Absolutely.
Or would there be other areas you would look at?
Absolutely. You know, having our Human Rights Department strengthened is important. Right now, the mandate for that department is very limited. You know, when an officer commits, you know, violates someone's civil rights, it's the police department itself that investigates. I wanna see that change. I wanna see our Human, you know, the Des Moines Human Rights Commission actually having an enforcement tool. Right now, if Josh Obar wanted to look at a case with the police department, he does not have the authority to do that. You know, it's very limited. We need to change or strengthen-
But police community relations are a small part of what we see in terms of the entire city of Des Moines as it relates to human and civil rights. I mean, you have housing issues, you have employment issues.
Absolutely.
The historic mandate for the Human Rights Commission went well beyond police community relations. So, you know, we understand. Your position is, we have to do something about the way that Des Moines Police Department engages now.
That's correct.
So now moving to the next issue. What specifically would you propose as it relates to the Des Moines Human Rights Commission?
Right now, they do a lot of wonderful things. Josh Obar is going after apartment communities that are really disgusting, you know, some of the shanty towns in our city. And he's going after them, and he is, you know, filing claims against them and working with residents to make sure that housing that they live in is adequate, safe, and meets city code. So there's that part, you know, we're gonna have to strengthen it. It's a very small department, you know? Our priority should be, you know, increasing that department to make sure we have enough, you know, officers in the Human Rights Commission to actually look at the issues in the city, whether it's employment, housing, or any other type of discrimination that comes from any city department, and making sure everyone in the city feels welcome and they feel safe, whether it's in their housing, their employment, and just strengthening that department altogether. You know, there's issues of affordable housing, not just about the condition that you live in, but, you know, do we have adequate housing for people in this city? You know, there was a study done by-
So how do we create adequate, affordable housing?
Des Moines is using TIF financing to subsidize luxury condos, townhomes, and apartments and hotels. Right across the street from Haskier, you know, the Manalom Tower is in the building, and it's gonna have fifty boutique hotel rooms, you know, and luxury apartments. And the city of Des Moines is subsidizing it to two hundred and forty million dollars for luxury apartments and boutique hotels. And we have in the city, for every hundred low-income families looking for housing, we only have enough housing for fourteen. That was a study that was done by The Guardian newspaper, an international publication that said, "Des Moines has worst housing stock than Brooklyn, New York for affordable housing." And that's a reality in the city. And as a city, we need to stop subsidizing these luxury hotels and apartments and say, "Developers, we're gonna give you some tax incentives, but you have to build affordable housing," using the city's purse strings and taxing policy to create an environment where we're incentivizing the constructions of, you know, low-income housing for people. Anon is doing some great things. Habitat for Humanity is making affordable homeownership available for so many low-income residents in Des Moines residents. You know, strengthening those policies and using the city's purse strings to develop the city in that direction. It's very viable. We have the systems in place, but we're using them in the wrong way. You know, downtown needed revitalization. Now we need to revitalize our neighborhoods, and we need to bring some life back into the city, to residents, you know, because you can't address poverty.
But how do those states, how does the statement you just made jive with what you opened with about Des Moines? And again, the reason, not to be hard on you, and everyone is gonna have this kind of conversation depending upon where they direct me, but there have been so many times when I've sat down with candidates who've said, "This is the problem, this is the problem, this is the problem, this is the problem." Two thousand and nine, Des Moines City Council candidate Skip Moore came to my house and talked about how in two thousand and eight, the Des Moines crime rate had exploded. And from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, we saw the homicide rate triple. We saw other violent crimes in two thousand and eight. From two thousand and nine, when he was elected, to two thousand and fifteen, the crime rate tripled, but now there's no more conversation. And an African-American grandmother gets gunned down on Thirteenth and University, and nobody seems to give a damn. So what I try to do is get beyond the candidate to get to what kind of representative are we actually gonna see? So, you know, everybody says, "We don't have enough affordable housing." What step A, B, C? Now, you said we need to reinvest TIF money into building our communities. Does the legal structure exist based upon how we've created TIF so that money that's generated, say, in the downtown community could be redirected to our neighborhoods?
And you don't even have to go too far. Right now, Hubble is proposing building Gray Station on the southwest corner of downtown, right now where that old Titan factory is. And they wanna create a community, right? And they're gonna be asking for lots and lots of TIF money. That's the reality of it. Are those housing units gonna be affordable, or is it gonna be market rate?
Well, first of all, what is affordable? Affordable has become an ambiguous and meaningless term. We've seen people build, government-subsidized, affordable housing where the units are eight, nine hundred dollars.
And that's not feasible for families who are on a, you know, one-income household that's making minimum wage, you know? Affordable, to me, when I came to this country, I lived in a shelter. You know, I lived in a homeless shelter because I understand what it feels like to not have access to housing. And you can't address poverty until you address housing, because if you're getting a sixteen-hundred-dollar check for the month, or two-thousand-dollar check, and half of it goes to your rent, that's not affordable, right? We have to have income-based housing for people in this community to develop and grow out of poverty, you know, to have that chance to move up in their social status.
So how do we create that?
You know, it's looking at a person's income. You know, we have some people in this community who are homeless. We have people who are living in housing that they cannot afford.
So, but I'm saying, but what is the mechanism? If you're saying that we ought to link the cost of housing to income and wages, what is the mechanism to achieve that?
And, you know, we don't even have to create a new rubric. The Housing and Urban Development has its own rubric that it uses for families who are looking for housing. You know, I don't believe you should be spending more than thirty-five percent of your income for housing. Thirty-five percent is a lot for housing. So we have to use those already mechanisms and rubrics that's available through HUD and different agencies that work on housing and look at, you know, when we're building communities and we're providing tax incentives, saying that we're gonna mandate, if you're gonna get this funding, that you put aside some of the housing stock for affordable housing, you know? You don't wanna have communities of ultra, you know, rich communities and ultra-poor neighborhoods. You want a mixed environment, and that's how we're gonna approach it.
So then, what mechanism does the city of Des Moines create? We get the Trump administration, which controls HUD. I mean, when the Obama administration was in charge, Tom Latham was the chair of HUD, and we couldn't get him to do certain things. And we didn't get certain things done.
And for us, in the city of Des Moines, we don't even have to look at the federal government. TIF financing-
But you mentioned HUD.
I know, but the rubric, HUD has a rubric that they've been working on for decades. I'm not saying we need their permission to take it. It's available, it's out there.
Okay, so then-
And the Des Moines Housing Authority uses that rubric.
So then, getting back to TIF then. Are there in place policies which basically limit what TIF dollars could be used for or where TIF dollars could be used that are potential impediments right now?
No, TIF financing is authorized by the state, and it gives cities wide discretion right now. The city of Des Moines has a lot of discretion, and I'm not gonna get into the nitty-gritty of the details, you know? We have to talk about the ideas itself.
Oh, that's what I like to do, is get into nitty-gritty, because-
It would be your powers.
Well, here's the reason why. Again, I'm no longer interested in talking to people about that we should feed hungry children. I'm interested in finding out how people propose that we feed hungry children. You mentioned TIF as an example of the misappropriation of funds. You mentioned TIF as something that has been used to build downtown and luxury boutiques while ignoring neighborhoods. I'm asking how you get around the political impediments that have earmarked TIF dollars historically to be limited to certain areas or certain uses and get them into those communities. I don't, I'm not saying I disagree with you in saying that we need to, but just saying we need to doesn't get it done. I'm asking how, how you get it done?
You have to start that discussion at city council. Right now, it's under their discretion where we spend that TIF dollars, you know? And if you have a city council that is appropriating the way it is now, and if you have two candidates who are running against me who don't think it's an issue, it's never gonna change. No one's talking about it right now. The Des Moines Register this year has written a couple pieces talking about TIF financing and the problems it has. Lee Rude, who does the watchdog, went to Scott Sanders, the city manager who's in charge of allocating TIF money, and asked him, "Who have you given TIF money to, and do you have a list of how much money you've been away?" And verbatim, in the Des Moines Register, you can read it, he says, "I don't know, and I don't have the resources to compile the list." And this is the individual who's giving that away. You can read the Des Moines Register. That's his quote there. There is a city council and a city administration that does not see the problem in the way it's running right now. If you look at it from an aggregate, if you're a well-off dude person, you own your own home, and you're financially stable, and you see the development in downtown, it's good, right? Development is good for the city. It builds, you know, the culture, and makes our city more interesting, and makes it more viable for people to move here. But if you're a poor resident, and you don't have access to adequate housing, and you're seeing the city networking on issues, not seeing the city push developers to build affordable apartments for people in this community, then you feel disenfranchised. You don't think the city government is for you. And we have to change that discretion, first of all. You can't go in there, "I'm only one person. There are six council members and a mayor." You know, it's gonna have to be a consensus. And we have to start holding people-
So how do you create that consensus?
We have to start talking about it. You have to start building those relationships and talk to people in the council and say, "Hey, we need to do things a little differently."
So who on the city council right now would you say agrees with you on this issue?
I think there are a lot of people. Skip Moore is a very reasonable person, you know? I've met him a couple times. He's running against Connie Bozeman, and Connie Bozeman is a person I support. And if she wins her race, you know, that's gonna be one of my closest allies on the council. You know, everyone on the council is not bad. They all wanna do good things. They all wanna do good things. It's about changing the focus and the paradigm, and that's not gonna happen day one. It's gonna be an uphill battle, but it's something we have to start doing. We have to put pressure on the council. It's not like I gotta get elected tomorrow and everything's good, I'm gonna get everything done. That's not the reality of things. I have to continually organize. I have to build coalitions in our community and mobilize people to get that change happening. You don't need a council member who's just gonna show up to vote. You need an activist council member who's gonna organize people in this community, work with organizations.
So what other issues do you see facing the city of Des Moines that are priorities of yours?
There's a lot of issues, you know? Making people feel welcome. In this city, we have hundreds and thousands of residents who are undocumented, who are living in this country, who are, whether they came as adults or as children, seeking a safe refuge for themselves. And we've seen this administration come about, you know, and increasing the deportation that people have been having. You know, it happened under Obama, but it's happening under Trump in a more rigorous and open fashion. And what we've been trying to pass in this city for the last six months is a welcoming cities resolution to disconnect the Des Moines Police Department from ICE. Right now, Homeland Security and ICE are conducting warrantless arrests. They have what's called an ICE detainer that is signed by an administrative law judge. That's a lawyer that was hired to look over things, not a judge, not a federal judge, not a district court judge, not a state judge. And they come in, and the Des Moines Police Department is assisting them currently in finding these people and apprehending them. And what we wanna do is say, you know, the Des Moines Police Department will no longer cooperate with ICE. The only time they will cooperate with ICE is if they have a federal search warrant or arrest warrant signed by a federal judge as the constitution states.
So that's one of the issues. What are some of the other issues?
You know, standing by clean water, you know, making sure that the Des Moines City Council is a vocal, you know, supporter of Des Moines Water Works. We've seen the attack that came earlier this year against Des Moines Water Works from the state legislature after we filed a lawsuit against the polluters that are damaging our water supply. You know, the Des Moines City Council did not stand up locally in support of that. We filed in the state legislature as, in favor of the bill to dismantle Water Works. So first of all, we have to change the city council's dynamic and be a vocal supporter of local-controlled utilities for water supply.
Other issues?
Right? There's a whole list. You know, we're just gonna roll through them?
Yes, that's why I want you to roll through them. I mean, here's the reality. Here's the reality. In the last couple of election cycles, we have seen the murder rate triple in Des Moines. We have seen the city of Des Moines borrow hundreds of millions of dollars and go into massive debt. And we have seen poverty explode and increase. The last ten, fifteen, twenty years, we've nearly seen poverty, functional poverty in our community double. But the skyline's pretty. And I've interviewed candidate after candidate after candidate for the city council. And historically, the conversations always went into, "I want families to do well, and we're a great community, but we can do better." And that is not how these interviews are gonna go this time. I wanna know how people are gonna get results. Now, I'll give you, I'm gonna go off script for a minute and say this. The day before I got elected to the Des Moines School Board, a radio show host interviewed me and made a list of the things I'd said I'd get done. Less than two years, everything on that list got checked off. I got results. Results are possible. I wanna know how people who are proposing to represent this city propose to get results after we have seen, based upon the empirical data, a significant benefit from local governance to the affluent and the wealthy, particularly those people who make money in Des Moines and then live in the suburbs. And we have seen the rest of the population suffer based upon the hard data. A body's found in Lutheran Zion Church parking lot, and suddenly people are saying, "What must we do about murder?" Even though we had murder after murder after murder prior to that, but those deaths didn't count because they were poor or they were people of color. So I'm willing to stipulate that you wanna see a better police department, clean water, better schools, families, young people move here. I wanna know how you're gonna get these things done?
It's about, you know, making them a priority.
I mean, is that fair? Is it fair to ask?
It's a fair question.
Because I'm gonna ask Josh, and I'm gonna ask Michael Kieran those same questions.
Absolutely. It's about building relationships in community. Right now, it's, I'm not gonna go on the council and say tomorrow I'm gonna draft several ordinances, working on these issues, and then they're gonna get passed. That's pie in the sky. And we have to talk about realities and achievable's. It's about me being on council, being, first of all, a vocal opponent.
Well, what ordinances are you gonna propose?
We've been talking about it for hours right now, you know, for the last hour, you know, about, you know, making affordable housing, you know, changing the way we use TIF and making sure that we're appropriating some of it for affordable housing.
This is what I've got. You're going to propose that when police officers are found guilty in court or found negligent or committed some form of malfeasance or dereliction of duty, that they be removed from the force?
Zero-tolerance policy.
The Des Moines Human Rights Commission needs more money.
Needs more money, and needs more staff.
That we need to quit misappropriating TIF dollars and redirect those into building the community instead of just downtown. That we need affordable housing. That we need to use the HUD model of at least where thirty-five percent, no more than thirty-five percent of a person's income should be spent on housing. I haven't heard who's gonna build the housing, who's gonna build the housing, and who's gonna do that? So I'm saying, I've heard everything you've said. What I'm saying is, there are other issues also. The city of Des Moines spends a lot of money on a lot of things. I'm asking you, this is your time now where I'm saying, what are you specifically going to propose, and what are you specifically going to do?
Those are terrible things right now.
Right.
When we look at poverty, you're saying people are struggling. You cannot build up wealth.
But I'm asking, and I forgot, and you're going to push for welcoming cities, and you're going to push us to back Des Moines Water Works. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. So what else are you proposing that we do as a city? And what specifically are you going to propose that we do? Which are two separate things.
Absolutely. And right now- Absolutely. And right now, you know, we, we're very short on time. If you go to my website, you can read for hours, you know, about the specific things I wanna do. You know, I wanna use this interview to, first of all, get my name out there so people know who I am and to note the philosophy and my political leanings and how I will, you know, legislate as a city council member for them, for people to know exactly where I come from. You know, building affordable housing. You know, right now, we're not gonna talk about-
But we're gonna go right to the-
Except, we can't get into the, in, in this short time. I can't say, "This developer's gonna build this on this street. We're gonna have this many units, we're gonna use this many nails and plywood to build a building." Now, that's getting very specific. First of all, we have to see that we have a problem. Because the city of Des Moines does not think we have a problem with policing, with affordable housing, with, you know, fair use, uh, resource allocation in our community. That, you know, all deaths matter, not just ones that are happening in more affluent neighborhoods. We have to change the paradigm of city council. For a city that's so diverse as Des Moines, for the council and the mayor to be all white, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna help anything. You have to have perspective. You have to have someone who understands difficulties immigrants, people of color, people of other races and, you know, other religions in this community are facing. First of all, it's about changing the paradigm and saying, first of all, we have to acknowledge we have a problem. Earlier this summer, I was at a conference-
How do you, how do you propose to change beyond, you, you getting elected? How do you propose to change the, the demographic makeup of the city council? You mentioned earlier, for example, the NAACP and the ACLU have collaborated. In the most violent and poorest district, in, in arguably the most violent and across-the-board poorest and most deadly district, Ward One, we have one person running. Des Moines School Board, we recently had two seats where no one ran. So, in a city where we see a lot of professional advocacy, people make money off of poverty. People make money speaking for the poor. We don't see anyone engage at the most fundamental level, local politics, which you said earlier. You said, "The reason I'm not running from Congress is because it's at the local level where the rubber meets the road." We don't see the professional advocacy class even engaging meaningfully and trying to recruit and run candidates to change the composition of who votes those TIF dollars. So, I, I bring that up because you said it's important. How do we then create the diversity if we can't even get individuals to run in those areas where they have the greatest blocks of folks, who could have the most influence in changing the way that that all-white council looks?
And it starts with me. I'm running right now in the third ward. This is where I live. And I can't run in the first ward or the second. I live in the third ward. And State Lottery bars I run in, sure, I live in.
Well, you know, listen, no, no, let me say this. If you, if you know Des Moines political history, you know there are a lot of people who've run for office who didn't live in the districts they ran, they won, and they end up representing those. A lot of folks in Des Moines and Polk County, I can name some of them, but we don't wanna use that time. But I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you do that. What I'm saying is that, that we've seen, one of the criticisms of President Obama is he got elected, but he never used his popularity to build infrastructure. Meanwhile, we see Steve Bannon out there getting senators elected, building and expanding the Trump brand. The Occupy movement can't. The Tea Party elected individuals. Progressive isn't one of the challenges to the progressive community to actually begin building political infrastructure and not just articulating concerns passionately and then fading away?
And that's true. And, you know, I'm the vice chair for the Third District Progressive Caucus for the Democratic Party. And what we're doing is we're going around building those relationships. We're training individuals, we're meeting with communities. I volunteer constantly. I serve as the president of Carroll, Iowa, the Council on American Islamic Relations. I travel the state, and I engage with communities about issues of xenophobia and Islamophobia, encouraging people to stand up for their rights.
So then why aren't you guys running somebody for the first, first ward of the city of Des Moines?
I'm only one person, we're a small organization.
I'm just asking. Organizationally, why not run somebody for the first ward for the city of Des Moines in a, in an area where the homicide rate has exploded again? I think it's fair to ask, when you see the homicide rate triple, you see jobs lost, and you see poverty, and you see a lack of, 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 of affordable housing, and you see the suburbs exploding, and all this federal money comes into the inner city, and none of it seems to be invested, forget TIF dollars. All that federal money that came in in the name of poverty. Now I'm saying in terms of the organization, why not run folks for office to get them in positions where they can be part of that voting coalition as opposed to, um, saying we need to create change, but we just aren't in position to vote? No TIF dollars won't go towards an luxury hotel with forty boutiques. Yes, it will go towards neighborhoods.
And, you know, that, that work is being done. Right now, I accept to run to be a vocal voice for those issues. And I'm only one person, but I'm working in my community with this, for an organization that I'm part of to continually develop people, people of color, minorities, people who are really progressive, you know, who wanna change those realities. And it, it's, it's not easy finding people who are willing to stand up. I will say, running for office has been one of the most difficult things I've done so far, and it's been daunting. It is not an easy thing at all.
And, and I laud you because you could be doing something else. Like just spending all that money you're making on, you know, having fun.
And the reality is, we have to stand up as a community. You did your part, you stood up, and, and you, you made, you know, changes. You know, I'm deciding to stand up, and it's not, and it's incumbent on me to continue that work, to build, to organize, to find new leaders, to, to mentor them, to give them support and advice that they need, and, and actually coming out and running for office. Because no one should run out of posts. I, I agree with you that. No one should be out of posts. Even if you're doing a great job, it should be a marketplace of ideas where people come in and offer solutions. You know, not the same old saying that I've been doing a good thing. You know, and it's, it's about building that community. It's about working with people, it's about having conversations like this on a grader scale, working with younger people, people who are interested in change, advocacy, working with, you know, immigrants who are tired of the, the problems that they see, working with traditional American communities that have been living in poverty and saying, "You know what? If you wanna change something, stand up, be heard. Organize your neighborhood, organize your community, run for office." And that's where things have to start. One person is not gonna change anything. We as a community, as a collective, need to voice ourselves. We need to stand up and organize and say, "Things have got to change." And that's where it begins. It's not a quick, easy process, but it has to start somewhere.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else, anything we missed?
I think we're good for now. If you have any questions, you can go to OmarForDesMoines.com and read in detail about my policies.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.